Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular monthly school board meeting, today being February 3rd, 2022. So I'm calling this meeting to order, and if you will now join me, please, in a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you will now join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morseberger.
Present.
Ms. Dooley.
Present.
Dr. Craft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And our student rep, Ms. Rigomaya.
Here.
Thank you. All right, now may I call for the approval of our proposed agenda?
I move approval of our agenda.
A second.
Any questions, comments, all in favor, please say aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. All right, now we will have our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. As a reminder, you are limited to three minutes, and if you'll please state your name and your address. And we will start with anyone who signed up here or would like to come up within the media center. Please come to the podium.
This is Academy and parent of a Greenbrier Elementary student. I spoke at last month's board meeting about the ongoing efforts of educators in Charlottesville City Schools to exercise our fundamental human right to bargain collectively with our employer, and to ask that you respect our exercise of that right when the time comes. I believe that Jessica Taylor will be giving an update on those efforts later in the meeting, but I'm here tonight to speak on a subject that is even more deeply personal to me, the attack on public education, the teaching profession, and the teaching of the truth about our country's history and society that is being led by our state's new governor. This blitzkrieg assault began on the governor's first day in office and has proceeded with alarming speed over the course of a few short weeks. Executive Order Number One, similar to an ill-fated bill that was withdrawn from the General Assembly in embarrassment due to its confusion of Frederick Douglass and Stephen A. Douglass, seeks to prevent teachers from discussing the existence of structural racism in our country and the institutional oppression that is built into our government, our legal system, our housing pattern, and our schools. To encourage private enforcement of this attempt at suppressing the teaching of the truth, the governor has set up a tip line so that parents can inform on teachers who dare to engage their students in discussions about institutional injustice. Were I to be intimidated by these efforts, I could no longer engage my students in discussions about redlining, the war on drugs and mass incarceration, police brutality, the school-to-prison pipeline, or how we can dismantle these unjust systems. Perhaps my daughter's teacher would even be hesitant to engage her class in a discussion about gender stereotypes, which my wife and I so enjoyed hearing about from our daughter earlier this year. At Lugo McGuinness, I would not even be able to talk to my students about why black and brown children are so disproportionately represented at their own school and alternative academy for students with behavioral issues. Meanwhile, at the same time that this very public silencing effort is ongoing, several bills are quietly working their way through the General Assembly, which would begin the privatization of our education system by diverting funds from our public schools to, quote, charter schools that are governed by unelected, unaccountable, private boards of directors. In my opinion, this is the real goal of the free-market extremists who are in control of our state government. Executive Order Number One and the tip line are intended to sow division and undermine confidence in our public schools in order to encourage people to accede to the privatization project. Now, I'm sure that none of this comes as news to any of you, and I trust that as democratically elected representatives of this community, all of you likely join me in passionate opposition to each of these measures. What I would like to ask of you tonight is to consider taking proactive measures to make that opposition known and to defend our students' right to learn and our educators' right to teach the truth. This will be a long and difficult struggle. My hope is that the students, parents, teachers, administrators, and elected officials of Charlottesville can all engage in that struggle together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the media center like to make public comment? Mr. Como, is there anybody in?
Yep, so sure, at this time, I'll ask anybody who is in the attendee gallery who would like to make public comment to please raise their hand using the raise hand feature or to put a message in the chat so we can acknowledge you.
Thank you.
We do have, a hand just went up.
Okay, that's fine.
The user is listed as Annie Subtle. Annie, I'm going to be promoting you to panelist, so you should be able to unmute, and you'll have three minutes for a public comment at this time.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Good evening, Dr. Gurley and school board members. Thank you, as always, for the work you do on behalf of our kids in our community. My name is Annie Subtle. I'm a parent to two children at Burnley Moran Elementary. Tonight, I'm actually here on behalf of a new coalition, Charlottesville United for Public Education. We're a growing group of parents, grandparents, community members, and local organizations working together to ensure every child in Charlottesville City Schools receives a quality education from preschool to graduation. From the pandemic to school reconfiguration, this is an all-hands-on-deck moment for our schools, so we invite all community members to get involved at charlottesvilleunited.org. Last night, one of our steering committee members, Shamora Cooper, spoke to the joint city council's school board budget session, and we wanted to quickly reflect on a theme we heard regarding equity during that meeting. Charlottesville children and teachers deserve modern, welcoming facilities, and they deserve every effort by Charlottesville City Schools to address the achievement gap. But we cannot pit these two issues against each other. Council must fund the schools, and the schools must teach equitably. The two go hand in hand. Among the messages that Charlottesville United for Public Education will be delivering to our city council and our community in the coming weeks is to trust the good judgment of educators who have made the case again and again that this reconfiguration is necessary for quality education to be delivered in Charlottesville. Thank you to Dr. Gurley, Kim Powell, and the various board members who attested to this last night. I urge any parents, grandparents, students, teachers, other community members who are listening tonight to please join Charlottesville United for Public Education. The time to invest in our schools is now, and the time for you to speak up and get involved is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Como?
At this time, I do not see any other hands raised in the attendees' gallery or in the chat.
Okay, we will have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting for public comment. So I will close this public comment, but now open up public comments specific to our 2022-2023 budget, if anybody would like to speak to that. Okay, and again, we do have an opportunity towards the end of the meeting, so we will move on. Thank you. We are now going to move to our next item, which is student and staff recognitions. Dr. Gurley, did you want to introduce or?
All right, the first one is Dr. Baptist with National School Counseling.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. It always gives me great pleasure to recognize groups of staff members and students for the great work that they're doing. And tonight, I am very pleased to bring attention to the fact that technically next week is National School Counselors Week, National School Counselors Appreciation Week. And we do have a wonderful cadre of school counselors throughout Charlottesville City Schools. I invited each of them to come this evening. I don't see any of them here. They're probably finishing up another busy day. But within the board information that you have, you have a listing of our counselors and their photos. So hopefully, when you're in the schools, you will get an opportunity to meet some of our counselors. Again, they're very, very hardworking. Counselors do so many tasks, from being a parent to our kids, helping their kids figure out what they need to do next, both academically and career-wise, working with our teachers, so many things. And I just want to thank all of the counselors that we have for the hard work that they're doing here within Charlottesville City Schools. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, and next we have Beth Chuck. She will be bringing appreciation for our school board.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. I would like to say that Charlottesville City Schools is pleased to join the Virginia School Boards Association in recognizing February as School Board Appreciation Month. The theme for the month, Building the Future of Public Education, reflects the partnership of the VSPA with local boards as they serve their communities and advocate for public education. This month is an opportunity for all of us in Charlottesville to build a stronger understanding of the crucial roles you have in just preserving representative democracy. School boards voluntarily take the enormous job of governing multimillion-dollar organizations while preserving our democratic values. In an era where parent, student, staff, and resident input is really being scrutinized and the value is more important than ever, you have taken on the role of listening to and representing our community and their values. We hear their perspectives, voices, and opinions through you, and we appreciate the work you do. We are thankful for your service to the students, staff, and families of Charlottesville. Thank you, and happy School Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have Dr. Baptist.
Hello again. I would echo what has just been said about you as school board members and all the work that you do. However, if we all are truthful, a lot of what you do would not happen without two young ladies sitting behind you, the clerk and the deputy clerk. This is also clerk and deputy clerk week, the third week of February. They do a wonderful job working with you, and also like almost herding cats with the administration. I won't say they're herding cats with you, but they are with us, and we truly appreciate everything that they do, and I would ask if each of them would come along.
Thank you, everybody, for all of that. And quickly, yes, thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts for all that you do, for your availability, and just support to us. We appreciate you. All right, moving on now, we will, moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. All right, now I'm going to turn over the next series of items to Dr. Gurley.
All right, so the first thing we have are items for discussion. We're going to do our makeup days, and throughout the presentation, if you have any questions, feel free to ask those questions during the presentation. I will be, I'll be first. All right, good evening, board members and those assembled in the audience. I bring before you proposed updates to our, to our school calendar. For the month of January, we had five days absent due to snow and two days in which we had two, two days in which we had two-hour delays because of sidewalk and road conditions. So as you know, I did recommend restoring two in-person instructional days, and subsequently, I've had some questions such as, why now? And what is this in response to? One answer is, the state requires 990 hours, and that is a minimum requirement. While we do have time accrued over the 990 hours, we have heard in meetings, that we have heard in our meetings is that, one thing that we've heard is that the time we have is often not enough time. On January the 9th, I did report that we were not going to make up any days. However, nine days later, on January the 18th, we did have to close again for snow, and we did have two additional days that week in which we had two-hour delays, thus prompting us, prompting us to review our instructional time for our scholars. In the month of January, and I do have a graphic here, in the month of January, we only had 11 full instructional days. And as I shared on yesterday with the joint session with the city, there are a lot of our subgroups, many of our subgroups that have been adversely impacted from the pandemic, and many of those same groups who have had to quarantine and miss face-to-face instructional time. Again, 990 hours is the minimum requirement, and some of our scholars will need more than the minimum in order to achieve at the level of their peers. This is equity, and this is the equity that we speak of. It's equity in action. While I know that the news was disappointing to some, I have been working with various advisory groups to gather feedback about how we can improve this process moving forward. I've heard a variety of suggestions. One person offering, maybe we should make the day up on April the 1st, because that's the day before spring break. Others have reiterated the value of protecting workdays, and so that's, the April 1st is a workday. And several have reminded me that staff are glad that we get the flexibility on the workdays that we've embedded into the calendar, because we still do have some days that are embedded into the calendar. So the ability to be able to work from home on those professional learning days, et cetera. I am listening, staff. I love you all. I'm listening, and I'm learning. And this has given me the opportunity to tweak the process in the future. But I will tell you that the staff's feedback has not led to a consensus, to an alternative way to meet the needs of our students and staff during this unusual season. So my proposed makeup days remain February the 21st, 2021, and March the 4th, 20, I'm sorry, February the 4th, 2022, and March the 4th, 2022. And please keep in mind that even after adding these two makeup days, we still have two additional workdays. There's March the 18th, and that was the day that we did as a part of our culture of care and wellness. And then we still remain with the 1st, and those are two days, those are two days that are still on the table. So keep these two additional work, so keeping these two additional workdays while restoring the in-person days strikes some kind of balance with supporting our staff and meeting the social and instructional needs of our students. And the bottom line is simply that this year has been challenging, and the sort of, and this sort of balancing act is the best solution on the table right now. I do take comments, feedback, suggestions from you as a board.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to start down. Well, who would like to start? Let's start with Ms. Dooley, if you have any questions or comments, and then I will call you.
No, I appreciate your comments there, Dr. Gurley. I guess I struggle in taking away teacher workdays this year when teachers are already losing so much planning time in covering for their colleagues who are out. And so I, you know, I appreciate the efforts towards equity and trying to have face time with students, but we also know that teachers need time to grade and provide really thoughtful feedback to students. And I just, I'm concerned about where they're having that time right now to really be thoughtful in how they are giving feedback to students to help them improve. And so I'm really conflicted about this. It's also a long stretch through February. Assuming we don't get more snow, we'll see what happens. But those are just some concerns that I have. I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. And, and those two days are not workdays. The, the, the 18th and the 1st are workdays. So the two days that are proposed were not teacher workdays.
And so those would be unencumbered.
Dr. Gurley. So those days, the 21st and the 4th were just?
Yes, the 21st and the 4th were just, the 21st was the day we added in, and then the 4th was a professional learning day.
Have you heard anything from principals, I guess, early, you know, people who had plans already and need for substitutes and coverage for the 21st, changing that from a holiday to an in-person instructional day? Are we going to have sufficient staffing?
Absolutely. So I did, I've heard from at least one principal who immediately said, I have a teacher. And so asked me for some suggestions in terms of how we can, you know, what, how do we move forward with that teacher? And most certainly, I don't want the, you know, I didn't want the teacher to be penalized, but I've not heard, and I've heard some different little things from various schools, but I mean, I've not heard of people, a lot, you know, a lot of people have things to do on those days. I mean, and people may have, but that has not been communicated. And I will tell you that I have been over-communicating throughout this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Craft.
I know this is, this is a, it's hard. It's a, they're hard choices to make here. So I was wondering, I'd like to hear maybe a little bit more about the, you said there was no consensus in the feedback, but I'm, I was wondering if it was sort of leaning in one direction or the other. And then, secondly, I was wondering if you had considered maybe sort of splitting the baby and returning, you know, one of those days and keeping the other.
Right. And so, you know, I am definitely a superintendent that values people. And so one, the, the very first thing that I heard was, please don't take teacher workdays. And so when I talk about the consensus part, the very first thing I heard was, please don't take workdays. So the workdays, that's the 1st of April, and well, that was the 1st of April. That's right at the end of the semester. It's right before the, right before the break. And then you hear from another group who says, well, you know, I can live with taking the day if you promise not to take the other two days. And then another group who then says, well, you can take the 1st because that's right before a holiday, which I agree with all of those things. I mean, at the core of what I'm suggesting, suggesting is that our students are, they deserve the time back. We know that many of our students have been adversely impacted by COVID and by the snow. And so, and then we also want to make sure we protect other time that we have. I mean, I value, again, I can't say it enough every time I stand up, that my mom was a teacher for 42 years, so I understand exactly what it is that teachers do and haven't been a teacher myself. And so, most certainly, for me, I'm not wedded to any of the days. I just know that we have to make up time. That part we do owe to our children. As we heard last evening, what people see the perception, and we're, and we're trying to tell a different story. And so that's why I think it's very important that our, our actions match also what we say. And so most certainly, I mean, we have days. 990 hours is the bare minimum, and we're not going to get to the end result by doing the bare minimum for our students. You're welcome.
Mr. Morris.
I would say my questions have kind of been answered in those two discussions so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant.
Dr. Gurley, as a, you all know, as a former teacher, I do value instruction. Also, I think workdays are important as well. But in this situation, the weather has not been our friend this year. And we do know, if we are talking about equity and value equity, we do know that many of our children, especially children from the subgroups, have fallen behind. And just to, to just to go with the bare minimum, 990 hours, I think is not the way to go. We need to make up those days so those children will continue to be engaged in learning. That is extremely important, and I'm looking at it from a teacher lens. Getting those kids in school so that they can continue to be engaged in learning, and that's how I feel about the situation.
Thank you. Ms. Bryson Morseberger.
My questions have already been asked, so I'm good.
Okay, Ms. McKeever.
I don't really have any questions. I just have the following comments. I feel like when teachers have a day off during the school year, even if it's unencumbered, it's always a workday. There's always work. Our teachers are always working. I feel like the idea that they're off is just ridiculous, and they're always serving our students. They run into them at the grocery store. They're making lesson plans. They are, they're always working. So I, I believe that the challenges of the last 18 months, two years, continue to exist, and even more so as the end of the year approaches. With this being such an important data year, all of the stress that's associated with that is just really coming this next four months, and they're well aware of that. And so to have a day off that we said at the beginning of January is something that they deserve and need, I think, is, continues to remain the same. I received from my kindergarten, no, third-grade teacher, a packet that had QR codes on it, "To do at, at home on a snow day. You can do this work." And I was like, Lord, help us, that this teacher has done this for her class is remarkable. And I just feel like there are ways that our teachers are constantly trying to engage with our kids, no matter where they are. And we are not, I'm not asking for the bare minimum. And I would like us to have a day off a month. And January, and while I, I always hate the school calendar, you guys know this. I look at January, I did not create, you know, those, those three days were already built into the calendar before these snow days happened. I don't, I, I'm, the idea that we would take away time that we invited teachers to have a break feels really wrong to me. So what I would ask is that we at least have the federal holiday off on the 21st. And then we would, that would mean that at least in the next four months, they would each, there would be a day off in at least those four months that we as a school board and school division have, have offered, or workday. Sorry, because March would be a workday. If, so I feel like splitting the difference is really what I would like to propose, which I will do in a moment, and that, I think Ms. Dooley's point about losing so much planning time because of substituting is one that cannot be emphasized enough. What they are doing during the school day is also being taken away from their students that they've had to engage with. So I just would like to move your proposal except for minus the February 21st date. That we have off, I mean, we go back to, we have school on March 4th, which is, is that the date? Okay, so March 4th, but that we don't have school on February 21st, the federal holiday. So that is my motion.
Second.
All right, I note that. I would like to see if our student has any input before we move any further on that. I note that I would like to see if our student has any input before we move any further on that.
I agree with Ms. McKeever, sorry.
Thank you. So Ms. McKeever, I do hear your motion. I would like to just comment myself, if I may, on this. Yeah, so I do feel like both points that were made and included in your motion are well taken. Dr. Gurley, I do hear you, I mean, as far as seat time and what our students, so I mean, this is the crux of education here, right? Of of all of us, and there's no doubt that the teachers, I'm sure when they, you know, pause to think about this and why they're in in the profession that they are, is to meet the needs of our students. So I think that, you know, there's some powerful messaging behind that. You know, we're trying to, as far as equity and what our students need. But I do agree with Ms. McKeever in the sense that I really would support, you know, and I know you and I spoke, sir, about is there another day? Is there, is there another way that we can make this work where we can still give them a break in February something, you know? And I concur, Ms. McKeever, they work all the time. Every teacher I know is working. And and I know we're all sensitive to that. So I would be supportive of that motion. You know, but again, I know, and I don't know that you want to speak to it now, but you know, there were other, and I'm curious, I guess, as questions, and and just for the public sake, I know you worked hard and reached out to principals and through TAC to try and get feedback. Because there was some pushback to this, and and I do want people to know that we heard that and we are, and and you did too. And and we're sensitive to that, so.
Absolutely. You know, I mean, for me, I hear teachers, I hear them. You know, I, I get their emails, I respond back, I'm in the buildings, I, I most certainly, I, I get it. And so the thing that I think people need to just know is that as a board, it's not an easy job. As the superintendent, as the principal, as the teacher, as the custodian, it's not an easy job. I mean, we all have difficult decisions to make. And most certainly, I think, you know, we recognize, we value what teachers, we value what, and this is, this moment is not just about teachers either, right? This is about every staff member because we, the twenty-first was a day, it's for a day for everyone. So most certainly, I support whatever decision is made. And I, I do believe that the people sitting, the people in our buildings are going to do the right thing by our children. And so whatever decision is made here, we're going to do it, we'll do it well. But yes, we, I hear teachers and we, we value, and we're going to find other ways. I mean, we put our heads together every Monday and every, every day of the week to figure out how we can just make things a little easier in our buildings. And so most certainly, I, I, I support any decision made in this room.
Thank you. And again, I just want to reiterate, you know, Ms. McKeever's point too, that this calendar is a challenge. And I know we've already talked about that in prior meetings, as far as looking at that and bringing different people, the people to the table when you work on the next calendar. And and trying to maximize, you know, seat time and student time, and definitely that is a priority of this board. But also the retention and the wellness of of our staff is important as well, so. All right. So we do have a motion. We have a second. Are there any other questions, comments from other board members?
I have a question and comment. Are we voting on the new amended motion now? Or are we voting on the first motion, the original proposal, and then that one?
So we're voting on Ms. We're voting on Ms. McKeever's motion to restore February twenty-first as a day that is off for all staff. And the fourth, back to a full instructional day.
Dr. Gurley, I'm, you know, wondering, I'm thinking, I'm, my inclination is to support the motion on the floor. I was wondering about, you know, the weather may not be our friend even going forward. And so what position are we in if we have a couple more snow, snow or ice days?
Well, that's the conversation that I've been having with the advisory group, with the various advisory groups. It's because, you know, everyone's very protective of time. And and I, I get it. You know, I mean, every day I have a list of things that I, I set out to do at work. And I don't get those things done like everybody else until we get home. And so what I've heard loud and clear is that people don't want, they don't want to extend the day. They don't want Saturdays. I don't want those things either. They don't want to extend the day, they don't want Saturdays, they don't want to extend the school year, and don't want to, you know, touch workdays. And, you know, we don't want to do virtual snow days. And I don't want to do, I don't want to do any of those things. But we're, we are going to have to figure out a way, a path forward for our students. And that may mean I have to ask to touch a workday. I don't want to do that, but I mean, I, and and in this conversation too, I guess I failed to say, I got a lot of emails too from teachers who say, I stand with you. You know, I've heard in our faculty, you know, I heard in our building, you know, some teachers are upset, but I, I get it. And so I want to make sure that, you know, all voices are heard. But I appreciate, you know, us being able to, you know, we doing what we do, what we set out to do. And I think that that's what people have to understand, that the role of the superintendent. Sometimes I have to make recommendations to things that aren't popular. But if we decide something different, I'm going to support it. Absolutely.
I still have that comment. So my original inclination was to support your suggestion of the two days, having understood that eleven days, I believe you said, out of January is a large chunk to make up for. And to also put that on the calendar to make up, because we haven't made it through February and March. So if any more weather days come up, we're going to be back to having this decision. So I understand the frustration, but I also think it's reasonable to say that the kids being out eleven days on top of COVID learning loss, we are getting into an equity issue because kids are so far behind already. So we do have to balance those, that, we have to balance that as well. And so I heard from people on both sides of the spectrum. And I think that the people who, I think people who are affected by the learning loss are not the people most vocal on the emails and that we're hearing from. So I would have supported your original proposal for the two days. But if this is the motion that we're going to have, then I'll support that as well.
And and one thing I will say, and then I, I can, I don't want to hold you all up. The last thing I will say, this has presented an opportunity for me as a new superintendent. And I think for us as CCS, that we can update our calendar to have how we will use, how we will do snow days. You know, because I know that learning loss is important. And so I think that that's what people need to also hear me say is, I don't think that you're saying because you want the twenty-first off, that you don't, that you don't agree that we all are being impacted by learning loss. I know everyone agrees to that. And so we have some opportunities to fix our calendar moving forward.
All right.
Dr. Gurley, in listening to LaShandra, I, I, you know, I, I am in agreeance with your first recommendation, but also Ms. McKeever's. But I just want people to understand, I'm not anti-teacher. My only concern is the learning loss of our children that concerns me. So if you're feeling that you can support the amended
Absolutely.
recommendation, then, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to support that. I just want people to understand that, I get it, I was a teacher, I know we value those teacher workdays. And but just my major concern is the learning loss.
All right. So we have a motion and it's properly seconded. Are we ready to vote? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed? No.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All righty. Next up, we have Ms. Powell, and she will be bringing our sales tax and reconfiguration.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. I'm joined tonight, this evening with, with Knox with VMDO. And because there was a considerable amount of time spent last evening during the joint session reviewing the reconfiguration plans and discussing various, what I call a continuum of contingency plans, I believe the plan now for this evening is to provide a briefer, a more brief update regarding reconfiguration. And then we also will provide an update regarding the sales tax initiative enrichment and how we're hoping we can advance that vehicle. So first, I'll turn the podium over to Wick Knox with VMDO to just present an abbreviated update on reconfiguration.
So as we discussed it after the meeting last night, since we talked about this so much, I brought a printed report of the floor plans that I was going to present tonight, so I will give those to you guys. The, it shows the programmatic breakdown of the school. And this is a school after we squeezed it, remember last night, I told you we squeezed about fifty-seven hundred square feet of it. We are still, after we did the calculations of how we create, how we calculate capacity, as instructed to us by the the middle school building committee, we ended up at ten sixty-two. So twelve over our ten fifty target, which is, is good news. And the packets that I'll show, show a school that is divided up to have, be able to be organized as three grades, so distinct learning communities. And each grade can also be broken down into two separate learning communities. So the learning communities range from one hundred and twenty to one hundred and eighty students, which is also what we heard from the building committee, I'm sorry, from the community design team this summer as being a very important part. Because remember, there was concerns about making a really big middle school, right? So I will, I'll distribute those and then be available for questions at any point.
So while Wick is distributing those materials, I just will provide a brief update regarding the sales tax initiative enrichment that we've been following. So the hope is, was that we would be able to, that Charlottesville would be able to put on the ballot this fall a referendum regarding a sales tax of up to one cent, one percent, or rather, one percent, that is exclusively for school construction. This is a revenue stream, a vehicle for raising money for school construction that has been authorized in other localities. In Virginia, not just any locality can do this and offer this option to the voters. You have to go through the state government to be authorized to do this. And so there has been an effort, both from the House side and the Senate side of the General Assembly, to advance this, this tool, this revenue, this funding mechanism tool through the General Assembly. And you're, you can see on the agenda, on the House side, it was House Bill five thirty-one and five forty-five. Five thirty-one is the bill for all Virginia localities to be able to have access to this tool for raising funds and to address crumbling school infrastructure. And then House Bill five forty-five was the version that just says, allow Charlottesville to be added to the list of other, along with other localities that can use this tool. On the Senate side, there is Senate Bill two ninety-eight, which is the one for Charlottesville specifically. And then Senate Bill four seventy-two, which is the one for, to enable all Virginia localities to present this option to their voters. We learned last Friday that the House bills effectively did not, did not advance. And they, they seem to, the term they use is laid on the table, which means that just, they weren't, they're not advancing at this time. And that generated some disappointment and calls for concern understandably, because this is a really important revenue or funding stream that, that needs to be brought to the citizens of Charlottesville for, for a vote and for a decision. So with that in mind, we were very fortunate to be directed to a group called Commonwealth Strategy, Commonwealth Strategy Group. And the goal in engaging with a group like this, their lobbyists, is to help move the conversation from a partisan conversation back to just a bipartisan consideration in the General Assembly. And the advice from this group so far is that Senate Bill two ninety-eight, the one focused on just Charlottesville, it's straightforward, it's just asking to do what other Virginia localities have been allowed to do when they've sought this revenue stream, you know, helping to make sure that that advances all the way through to the floor and then get signed into legislation. So the recommendation from staff this evening is that the school board authorize Dr. Gurley to engage with this firm, Commonwealth Strategy Group, for twenty thousand dollars to assist us in this general, in this session for the remainder of this General Assembly session, to help move this conversation to, back to more of a bipartisan conversation in the General Assembly. There's still a lot of discussion about this. The legislation for all Virginia localities to be able to have this option. There's a very compelling article in the Mercury, one of the newspapers. I've seen some good conversation about that, so who knows what will happen. But for the investment that we are suggesting be made, the advice of these experts, if you will, is to focus on the Creed deeds vehicle of Senate Bill two ninety-eight. And so that is the request before you this evening.
I would move that we follow the superintendent's direction and engage with Commonwealth Strategies.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Morse? No? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you much.
I just want to say thank you to both Ms. Powell and Mr. Knox for their really powerful performance, you know, presentations last night. It was just amazing, and I'm just so grateful for your expertise. And I know, like, there's not much going to happen between now and, like, the end of, whatever. This is not, there's not that much going on for you, Mr. Knox, and what you guys have done. So I just want to say publicly, thank you. And it's been really a pleasure working with VMDO and your team.
You mean, you're not working on the next presentation, Wick?
It's got a forty-three page slides coming up right now.
Thank you very much. I agree.
All right. Next, we have Dr. Baptist with our COVID update.
Good evening again. One of the things I can say about the COVID update is thank goodness January is over. January was a tough month for our, our numbers and for lots of different things. On this slide, I'm showing you some information that I've shown you before, but just over the last week, just in this month already, you can see we've had a hundred and sixty-one cases in three days. But that's about forty less than we had the first three days last month. So it is getting better. The rolling fourteen days is, is how we determine the transmission. We're down about almost two hundred cases over a rolling two weeks now. I mean, that's still high, but it's, 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 we're moving in the right direction. So we, you know, have seen, the highest that we saw on the rolling number was on January twenty-first. So we're, we're seeing things go down.
Dr. Baptist, is this number within our division?
No, this is the city of Charlottesville.
City of Charlottesville.
City of Charlottesville. Next slide, please. I showed you this last month. This is the UVA model. And I told you last month that the peak was going to be on January the thirtieth. Well, they changed it. Now it's on the February the sixth. There's just a tiny difference between January thirtieth and February sixth. And I put the February sixth information there. They've added another category, which is diminished vigilance. Not quite sure what that means, except probably not wearing masks and not being socially distant and whatever. But if we reach the point that we are diminished vigilance, our peak will be the thirteenth of February. So I'm hoping that we are, I'm hoping that we've really kind of hit the peak already within the school system. But that's the information, the latest information that we have from the UVA. Next slide, please. So what are we doing? We're continuing everything we've been doing. We're continuing the masking. We have gotten the KN ninety-five mask. We've gotten more masks for our children. The fire department has given us masks, health department contacted me today, they're going to give us masks. So a lot of people are working with us to, to do this. And we are holding firm on our mask mandate within the school division. For isolation and quarantine, we're still holding longer than what CDC says. We're doing the ten days of isolation versus CDC saying five days and then heavily masking for day six through ten. We're staying with ten. The only thing we have changed is by our quarantine where it was fourteen days. We were the last school division area that was doing fourteen and we have reduced it to ten for a couple of reasons. And I'll get into it with the testing, but also it was getting very, very confusing for people fourteen versus ten. And now it's just ten. So we've done that and spent a lot of time thinking about it before we, we did it. Vaccinations, Blue Ridge is now doing vaccination clinics in our schools each week. We're on a rotating basis. This week we did one at Walker. And Mr. Hay, Dr. Hastings called and said, we've got six booster shots that are going to be thrown away unless somebody uses them. And I went running up and down the halls of Dairy Road and sent three people over immediately to get booster shots. So next week we'll be at Clark on Monday and Johnson on Tuesday. And then we will have a rotating schedule that, and that will be for shots for our five through eleven or can be boosters or first shots, first, second shots for twelve through seventeen. And it can be first, second or boosters for adults. So we're working with the health department for all of that. Testing, got lots of testing still going on. We're using our rapid test that we've had. We got new rapid test after we had all those that we needed to, that expired. We still have the rapid test that schools can use for staff or students if someone is symptomatic or there's an issue at school. And those are proctored, meaning we are keeping close track on those. We also are doing the P C R testing in our schools that we've been doing three days a week. That we have been doing it Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Next week we're switching. Okay. Next week we're switching to Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. We've been very fortunate with that testing program. You know, at first we were bragging that we were getting the results back in about six hours. It's gotten a little longer than that and we had a couple of weeks that it was slower because they had people taking vacations. But other than that, we're still getting them pretty quickly. Like last night it came in at ten forty-five. I think that's pretty quick when they were testing till one thirty here. So we're getting the results back. One thing that has been a concern with some is that we don't always get all of the results at one time. We will get open cases. And what that means is they're either having to run a second test on it or there was not enough of a sample from the swab that they would be able to get a good clear test. But we've been able to get final testing. I think on just about everyone, may have been one or two tests throughout the whole testing program that we've not been able to get a final test for. So we have been very appreciative of our vendor who has done an excellent job. And this is the same vendor that does a lot of the testing for Blue Ridge Health District, next molecular. And then we also have started tests to stay. We have not rolled it out as heavily yet. We're in the process of really rolling it out. We have two different types of programs. One for our students and they're using the by next rapid test. So we've got one set of rapid test in my office. We've got another set of rapid test for test to stay in another location, so we can keep them separate. And we're doing that with the, the students. So if a student is exposed, it cannot be a home exposure. It's got to be a school exposure or a community exposure that we can do test to stay. And that, that decision about not being a home exposure comes from the state, not from us. So if a brother has it in your expo, or sister, sibling, household member, we don't do test to stay. It has to be school or community. So we would test them at school and then send home five tests for them to test. And they will be proctor test, so then they would be able to return after that. For the adults, we cannot use the test to stay program from the Virginia Department of Health for our adults. So we have purchased independently tests to say, these are not by next. They are care start, I think is what they are. And we have those and we are beginning to start that with some of our staff. So same thing, staff member has an exposure, we would then have them test. They probably would test with one of our by next tests at school and then we would send them home with test. So lots of different testing programs. Beth Chuck, my partner in crime on most of this. And now we're bringing in Leslie to help us on some of it. It's been, it's, it's gets confusing with all the different programs. But I think we're doing just about as much testing and vaccinating with our staff and students as we can. And we will continue to do it as long as we feel like the need is there. Next slide. This is just our dashboard. I know it's small, but you can see we did, we had our peak within the school system the week of January fourteenth. We feel like some of that was residual from winter break. You know, kids were coming in and, and the snow time. They were off for so long that we were getting the cases from the previous exposures during the break. So we have seen it go down. This is current as of last night. I have not added cases from today on there. For a while I was adding them just as soon as I was getting them. And now I'm doing them each night to keep up my own process. So this is through last night. The first chart I gave you was through this morning. So trying to keep all the data up to date so that we can know exactly where we are. So that's where we are for right now. I didn't give you the state of Virginia again because it's still all red. But we're, we're, we're feeling confident that we're getting there slowly, but surely.
Thank you, Dr. Baptist. Take any comments, questions, Ms. McKeever? Or let's go to our student. Do you have any comments or questions regarding COVID, COVID testing? Anything else that you're hearing within the building?
Um, I know our school sent out an email about testing being open to everyone and it being more frequent. And I personally am getting tested weekly, so I think that helped a lot. And I'm not sure about the testing status at other schools. But I think as long as that's being promoted, it probably helps more.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear you.
No, I, I think everything that was presented was good. I was just saying the, um, the testing status at our school is pretty good for right now.
Thank you. Ms. McKeever?
Yes, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Baptist, also to the principals who are working really hard to make sure that communications are happening as you. As Dr. Gurley can attest, I'm always like, is this, what's happening? So I'm very grateful for the principals and their communication. I really dislike this COVID dashboard. I think it's, I think we need to do better. I love the data that you gave us in the update, which was by day for the path. You know, that I thought that was useful because, well, I mean, of course that was city data, not school data. But the weeks confuse, I think, me. And like, I, you know, I, I sometimes compare the data that I receive from the principals with the data on the COVID chart and it doesn't really match. And then I'm, and I think that the transparency is critical. And that's where I worry that sometimes we're not being as, it's just not as easy to understand as it could be if we perhaps were doing it by day rather than by week ending day. So that's just, I understand, I think, why you do it that way maybe. But I also would love to have more of a daily count, like the, like the city data that you had provided first.
Which I'm.
It was like a slide number two or something on this.
The count my last seven days. Yeah. And I'm not sure with, because I would, I would have a different view of the dashboard than others might. Do you have a view of the dashboard that does show the by school by day?
No, well, it has it by end, week ending. I just have a cumulative, well, I have the week ending and then it has, so it has the day of the week ending. And then it has like the school name and then student number, staff number.
And that then feeds into the chart.
Chart, which is, you know, I just, perhaps we could make, again, who am I? Like you could just, I feel like the cumulative is, it's just a weird chart. Like I just, if this is the process, this is the process. But if there's, um, I think, given what I understand, the principals send to me as a parent and I receive and what, you know, what this chart says, it, I'm just always worried what I'm missing as a parent. And, you know, like I, I know one parent is always asking for like, who's in quarantine? We don't know how many of our students are in quarantine. Like we know when classrooms go virtual, which is very helpful. And, but we, you know, it's just like we can't. And again, hopefully the numbers keep going down, this become, you know, less urgent feeling as a parent. But it also just, I think, part of the problem when you have a now kind of hostile state government, it's hard to know which entities to trust and to have, you know, to be, to give information so that parents can accurately kind of reflect what the risk is for their children and families. That's what I, I feel like we've been doing a good job of that. And I would, I think, uh, some of this data could, we could do, you know, have slightly better data that, or slightly better ways of communicating this with parents.
I can agree with, we could probably come up with a easier way to do it. I will tell you on our dashboard, every case that is reported to me as a possible or a confirmed case gets counted on our dashboard. We don't have our exposures on there. And part of that is tracking them from, you know, you might get exposures at different time. It would be a full-time position to, to keep all of that. But we, um, every case that, that I know about goes on the dashboard.
It, it's just hard, you know, you know, as a, you know, you're like, okay, well, I mean, anyway, you're always doing a calculated risk when you're sending your children to school. You look at sometimes you're like, oh, well, the week ending today, you know, for example, there was like, you know, eleven cases at this X Y school. And you're like, well, was that even close to where my students are? And then you have to ask your student like his, and of course, my students are terrible reporters. So it's, it's just, I mean, it, I, as, you know, I'm, I'm trying, you know, I'm constantly trying to not be anxious. So, but at the same time, like, it's hard to get good information about the risk.
Thank you. Ms. Bryson Morseberger? No comments? Okay, Mr. Bryant?
Just thank you for all you do, Beth, coordinating the testing and your staff members, whoever else is involved. We appreciate your good work.
Thank you. It's a teamwork with all of us, but thank you.
Mr. Morse?
Just one quick question for clarification. For the test to stay program, you said it can't be an at-home exposure, it has to be community.
It's got to be a community or a school exposure. So if you have it in your home, that's, that's part of the requirements from the test to stay program.
Right, right. What is that confirmation to say like this was not at home versus the, the community? Is that, does that, that student or that family have to provide something?
We have not asked for exact proof, but if they say that another sibling or a parent has had it in the home, then we've used that as a self-report. If we find out that there's been a play date or a birthday party and if there've been a group of kids, that's going to count as a community or athletic or, or whatever else. You know what, we haven't asked for documentation within the family and just hope that families would, will work with us to, for us to be able to follow what we signed our attestation form with V D H to work with.
Thank you.
Dr. Craft?
Also great appreciation to you, to Beth Chuck, I guess to Leslie too, in the future.
We're pulling her in. We wanted her to have some of the fun too.
Yeah, no, I think we're just so fortunate to have this. And I do know that it is, it takes a lot of staff time to manage all of these different testing programs. And so I just appreciate that. I had one quick question and that was the test, I believe the test to stay programs, those tests have to be proctored. And I was just wondering if that's creating any concerns or at all, how's that going?
We haven't been doing it long enough to know whether we've had many concerns. We did our first pilot last Thursday with one of the schools. So we've only been doing it a week with the test to stay. And we have said that if we have families who just say, I cannot do this at home, then we would have the child come to school. Understanding the parents would have to be in agreement that the, that child could come to school. But if one of those tests became positive, parents have got to come right then. And we know that it's, it's difficult for families. When, when mine would come along, if you told me I had to do one more thing to get them ready out of house, couldn't have done it. So, and they, and test to stay does want this to happen in the morning, not the night before. I am not asking people, did you do it at eight o'clock at night or seven in the morning? Because, well, I guess it's test to stay, people know when they did it. But they want it done in the morning because you might be negative at night and positive in the morning. And for test to say, parents do have to agree to follow what we need to do. And if a parent says, I really need them to come, we'll work, we're going to try to work with them, but do the testing.
My comments are just as a parent of a four-year-old, I was really heartened by the news this week that we might be able to start getting our youngest learners vaccinated here in the near future. So not really a question, just planting a seed that knowing your team is probably already in the works, but just eager to hear plans to roll out vaccinations for our little guys soon.
As soon as Blue Ridge says that they've got the vaccine and we can do it for the, the little ones, we'll probably invite the parents in to come be a part of that event.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, I just want to also acknowledge, as everybody has gratitude to all of you and your team for all of the hard work. Thank you to the division, Dr. Gurley and everybody for staying the course and prioritizing care and, and health of our students right now. And I think that, that's where, you know, we stand firm. So I appreciate that and thank you.
And I would encourage any families or staff, if they've got questions about the process, because it does change and scenarios are different, please let me know. Beth and I've worked on some documents just this week that would help principals, like in this scenario, if this happens and do this. And I know it's confusing, so if anybody's got questions, if they reach out to me, I will try to talk through this scenario with them to see what's the better thing to do.
You do, and you, I mean, you acknowledged briefly and I, I just do want to acknowledge that, you know, with any, any vendor, any type of testing, sometimes there are mishaps or we need to retest and, and, you know, it, it is not optimal. When that may mean a student has to stay out of school for a couple of more days, you know, but it really is no fault of ours. And, and we apologize for that, you know, and, and we just continue to do our best.
These tests should not really have been done in the manner that would be determined whether a child would be in school or not. So while we've had some open tests, I don't know that there should have been any tests that would have kept a child out of school. But we do work very closely with the vendor when we don't get the results to try to get the results as quick as we can.
Yeah, well, thank you. Appreciate you.
All right, and Dr. Baptist will, I remember last month we brought to you an updated sick leave policy. And we were still working through some of the kinks with regards to if both parents worked in the school division. So she's going to bring that update to you, our updates.
Um, and these are the regulations, not the policy. So these will be issued by Dr. Gurley. But where we made the difference was, and there had been a question, when both of the employees in a situation like this, are, are both parents or employees, how they would take the leave. So we have changed that. And those of you not used to how I do policy, anything new is always involved when it comes to you. And if I have to bring it back to you again, then it's got crossouts and, and underlining. So where we had in there the statement about if both parents are employees of Charlottesville schools, they may use a combined total of thirty days. We've changed that, that they may use, they may each use up to thirty days. So this would not be a situation necessarily for F M L A, because somebody would already be using F M L A. This is more when we've got two parents in a bonding situation or foster situations, a little bit different. So we have changed that, so it would be, each would have the thirty days. And that's the, the only change that we've made in this. So bringing this to you is much for information and then unless there are really any major concerns. So bringing this to you is much for information, and then unless there are really any major concerns, then we can have this issued in, in, in our. Our policy and regs documents pretty quickly.
And 30 days is six weeks.
Yes.
Do we need to take action on this?
No, we just wanted, we know people had questions, we had been getting emails, and there are some people who are impacted by this, and they're excited about it, and so. We just wanted to make sure we brought it back to the public.
We've already got a couple of employees are kind of already in the works, but we couldn't, couldn't say for sure until this is issued, but we've got people ready to use it.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments, quickly, board members? All right, thank you so much.
All right, and next we have Mr. Cuomo.
Good evening, I'm Adam Chair, members of the board, community, I come tonight to. Share one of technology's newest initiatives, which is a private, private fiber optic. WAN, and I'd like to go through exactly what that is, the associated costs and the benefits of such an endeavor. So, a private. Fiber WAN essentially is a racetrack of wire. In which internet is carried, so for Charlottesville city schools, all of our internet connections run across this WAN. And right now, that is, that is public, and we are looking to have a private company come in and build this kind of racetrack for us. There's lots of key benefits, like I said, we'll go over the costs and benefits and the timeline, and we'll try to answer any questions, but we wanted to get this to your attention. So we'd like to move forward with this in the next 30 days for some funding advantages. And so the way our schools communicate with one another is, is through this WAN, it's essentially fiber optic cable. And like I said, it's, it's currently. Owned by other companies, and we're looking to privatize this, so Charlottesville city schools becomes the owner of this network. Some of the key benefits. Are as follows, we, we have several key benefits, the first one is scalability. Our private fiber network essentially will allow us to expand bandwidth that includes services that use internet. And so, right now, we typically think of what uses internet as kids' computers, teachers' computers. But you've got, you've got boards, you've got watches, you've got phones, you've got security cameras and systems that are just ever expanding. And when you use more and more of that bandwidth, you pay a much larger figure each month to make that happen. This plan will allow us to own and scale as, as we wish, no additional cost, it's simply the cost of the material. But we will, we will have this scalability will be almost unlimited capacity and an unlimited speed. Also flexibility. The network, if we build it privately for us, we are in full control over it. We're controlled, we can control every aspect of this network, we're not bound or restricted by contract terms from local vendors. We are not engaged in additional traffic, you know, sometimes driving on the roads, you can imagine. Getting bottlenecked in during a rush hour, the same is true on the internet with this, with these fiber optic networks. A public network gets bogged down over time, and that impacts services that we try to provide to our schools. Having the private network means the only traffic on that network will be Charlottesville city school data and information. Another advantage is cost savings. We will save about 35% of our recurring costs. In terms of numbers, we would be paying roughly about $7, $7,800 a month versus $12,200 a month, so we'd be saving about $4,400 a month. And that's on their lower speed plans, their higher speed plans, we could pay upwards of up to $20,000 a month. Whereas in this, this will always be at that monthly cost right around $7,800, so significant savings that way. And then, of course, our bottom line is, well, how's this going to impact kids, right? We want to know how's this going to help kids, how's this going to help teachers? Well, essentially, private fiber is just that, it's private, it's faster, faster internet, more reliable internet for students. So every Chromebook, every program, every camera, every phone that's using internet will be much faster and much more reliable on this private fiber network. And currently, right now, we have, and I don't want to get too technical, but we have. If there's a cut in the fiber, anything past that cut is without service until they can come fix that. The plan we're looking for is a ring, which goes in both directions, so that if there's a cut one way, we can simply reverse that flow of traffic and. Not lose internet for multiple sites. So that redundancy really cuts down on, on times, and believe it or not, it would happen more than you think when there's local construction. Or someone taking care of something in the ground, we, you'd be amazed at how sometimes we get calls. Internet's down, turns out somebody cut it, and that takes, that takes time to fix, so it's just an added layer of keeping that internet up for our students and our staff. So what does, what does this cost us in terms of out-of-pocket for local budget? Well, this program falls under E-Rate, and E-Rate is a program designed to support schools and initiatives with internet connectivity. So we qualify it upfront for an initial 80% reduction in cost. If we are going to use federal relief funds, which I'm going to recommend that we do that, E-Rate will kick their. Input up to 90%. Leaving us with a 10% bill on a 100% project. So in terms of what that looks like financially, and these are rough estimates for figures on the next slide. An initial construction of $2.8 million. If E-Rate initially funds a total of 80%, that's 2 million, about $2.2 million. If we use S R funds to pay 10% of that total cost, E-Rate will kick in another $280,000. So our bottom line with this $2.8 million project is a zero dollar out-of-pocket from our local funds. Which to me is one of the main reasons I would like to move forward with. An event like this, so E-Rate does have, it's called a one-time construction of private fiber networks, because this is essentially a lifelong investment. This is a 20-plus year fiber network that we would use to service our schools and our systems. So the timeline, if we were to move forward with this, we get to select our vendor in March, which is a short month away. We would come to terms and contracts with them in April. They would begin in July of 2022, just a few months away. And they would work around the community for the next 10 months, and they would be in touch with my team, probably on a weekly basis, giving us updates. And, and pro, forward progress on things. The goal for use with this would be July 1, 2023, as we start our next fiscal year. And again, just, just in summary, the benefits of this, I think, are phenomenal, this is a long-term investment. This gives us an unlimited amount of scalability, it gives us as much speed as we could ever imagine or want. With the growing expansion of security cameras and the one-to-one initiative for Chromebooks and teacher devices and view sonic boards. All of those things use internet, and this network will privatize that. And give us all the opportunity to give, I think, the fastest and most reliable experience for our kids. And bottom line for us is, it will not cost us any of our local dollars to, to build this if we, we do, to do it this year. I'm happy to answer questions, and those I don't know the answer to, I'm happy to report back to you.
Thank you. Ms. Dooley, we'll start down with you, please. No questions, Dr. Kraft?
This almost sounds too good to be true. It seems like there's no downside to this.
It's a very good time to invest some of those federally funded dollars on top of what E-Rate, which is a wonderful program. The combination of the two, it does make it a very optimal time to make a big investment, yes.
I'm all for it, and thank you for doing this and, and moving us into this possibility.
Mr. Morse?
Yeah, just a couple of questions for clarification, you mentioned fiber cables, you know, they, they are cut quite often during construction. Through this private network. The cost to repair that, is that with the vendor? Or does that then mean that we need personnel to then deal with that?
So we will, we will pay a vendor maintenance fees, which they've, I don't want to say it tonight, but they have told me repeatedly that those fees will go down over time. But yes, they will, they will have vendors on site within two hours of a cut, which is typical time, but we. Will be paying for maintenance services to maintain those lines, so if the city of Charlottesville decides they are going to expand a road. And that interferes with our fiber network, then this company under, under their contract will assume the responsibility necessary to move. Those wires, repair those wires 24/7/365.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, Patrick, I have a quick question. Will students using their Chromebooks in the community, will they be, can they access this private network outside of the, the Charlottesville?
So right now, the, it would be similar that they could not, they would only be able to access within the building, there is a potential for future to, to. Tie into that network and bring it to other areas of the community, that would probably require much deeper conversation. But we own the network, so anything that we'd want to do as far as expanding service would just come down to funding, construction and. You know, support from the school board or support from the city to, to expand that opportunity, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bryson Morseberger?
Yes, you were saying it, you were saying it should be around $7,800 a month for the service. Does that include the maintenance fees that you were suggesting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you were saying, well, we contribute a certain amount. The E-Rate goes up to 90% that they pay, so it, it balances out to zero is what you're saying.
Yes, if we, if we use relief money. E-Rate will pay for 90%, and the relief money will cover 10%, and we will have a zero dollar upfront cost out of local budget.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McKeever?
Mr. Cuomo, I don't see any action needed in this, I'm happy to make a motion if said motion is needed, but I don't see that as something that's needed.
Sure, we were going to, I pushed that to March, but I mean, sooner would be better, if the board is thinking this is a great initiative to move forward with. I would be glad to bring that back to my team and, and start those conversations.
Well, it sounds like you are trying to get a vendor by next month, so I want to make sure that you have as much time to. That's my only concern, like, obviously, this is an amazing program, it doesn't cost us any local dollars, and it will support our. You know, the, our students in our buildings, and of course, save us operationally as well, so. I just. Maybe there's more to it than that.
It's, it's pretty straightforward, I just didn't like to spring any surprises on the board, it's.
Right.
What you see is what you get, and we were just to give the board time to reflect on it, I did not want to push action item, but. I'm happy to take an action item back to my team and, and start this process if the board is, is looking to move in that direction tonight.
Well, since we had kind of a overview of it at our work session, I feel like I am personally. Feel comfortable moving that we support this initiative. You know, of course, the rest, at the, at the will, of course, of the majority of the board, but I just wanted to make that motion so that maybe we can. Not have it come back next month, since we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, and we can talk about it about.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. Do you have any comments or questions about this?
No.
All right, well, I do. So just out of curiosity. This benefits students in the building. We talked, or someone had a question about, you know, is there the possibility of this impacting or, or. Improving student accessibility through their school devices if they're at home, I mean, I know we've. Worked really, really hard to make sure that students have accessibility at home with hotspots, will the hotspots be able to? Hook up?
So the hotspots would be independent, an example of how this might expand would be if, if the, the ring network. Were to go past a neighborhood that was a high-needs neighborhood for internet. There could be discussion to tie fiber off of that ring into that community, where then you would have internet access capabilities. And we would need to discuss funding of that and installation costs and maintenance of that line, and then the, the fees that would be associated with. Internet charges for, for giving internet to that location.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's, it's well-known that there are some neighborhoods who, who have less access, and I personally. Would love to. Get some information on what, what those costs would. Would be to add on to that, I know that Mayor Walker, you know, worked closely during the pandemic with different providers. And, and making sure that there was access, so I mean, I think that need is probably still there. But I'm happy to. I guess entertain the motion for the current, for what you're proposing, that I would, I would like to. Ask that we do look at that and look further into that, yes, Ms. Dooley?
Oh, I'm, I'm very much in support of this, I don't see downsides, I guess, just procedurally, I have questions about moving to action when it wasn't on the agenda as such. Just for public comment purposes, I don't think anybody would take issue with this, but just setting the precedent moving forward makes me uncomfortable.
Sure. We do have, I know, a, a meeting coming up on the 14th. As a possibility, as a budget work session, which might be a really quick. Meeting, but we could, you know, entertain adding that as an action item, and that allows Mr. Cuomo time to get moving on that. So I'm, I'm fine with that, thank you for that. Is everybody else okay with that? All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Cuomo.
Thank you.
All right, and the next item, Ms. Powell and I will bring you the budget. All right, and thank you all again, I, I'm going to start us off as we did. As we did last evening with a couple of slides, and just to start off by saying that. There is a statutory requirement that the division superintendent prepare an amount. That is deemed needed for the next fiscal year, so we did want to start with that. And so again, we just want to look at, this is our enrollment based on fall of 2021. And so through our pre-K, through 12th grade programs, we had 4,288 students enrolled. And our pie chart just lists our changing demographics throughout Charlottesville city schools, and as you can see, 40% of our students are white. 32% of our students are black, 13% are Hispanic, 9.2% multiple races, and 6% are Asian. And so as we talk about how we spend our money, it's really important for us to look at those subgroups, and I just want to keep bringing us to this. Because 13.7% of our students, almost 14% of our students are students with disabilities. And 45.9%, almost 46% of our students. Are students who qualify as economically disadvantaged. And lastly, 15% of our students are English language learners. And so this data is prudent to our budget development process, because. As I stated on last evening, we differentiate our support based on the needs of our students, and some of our students. Make up three of these categories, and so it does, this does have implications for how we spend our money. I thought this was really important to share, that this is some research from curriculum and, and associates. And so what we learn is that race, income level, and location are variables that determine. How well our students fared in reading and mathematics at the end of the 2020-21 school year. This was the first full year after the start of the pandemic, and what the research found is that students were behind, on average, five months in reading and mathematics at the end of that. 20-21 school year. But however, the research does show that black and Hispanic students were behind six months. And if you dive a little deeper into that research, what it shows is that income level also plays a part in how well students fare. And, and so I just think this is really important, when you look at mathematics, that students. If you, if your family's income is less, $25,000 or less, the gap was seven months, and so that's really important to look at, and then when you move down to reading. If you look, black students. if you look, black students were six months behind in reading. Hispanic students were five months behind, but white students were behind three. And so when you think about the previous slide that showed some of that subgroup demographics data, what we know is that some students were already bringing in some deficits. And then you add on the impacts of COVID-19. And so there, those gaps were further exacerbated. We have talked about, so we are responding and our teachers are doing an amazing job. We currently have over 100 teachers enrolled and participating in the science of reading. And so what we know is that we needed to do some, we needed to root our strategies in research because of the widening then gaps because of the pandemic. And so we are utilizing this research-based approach. And so we are strengthening our foundational skills. We are addressing fluency and incorporating writing. And each teacher throughout our grades K through two are implementing the science of reading. And that graphic on that right-hand side just shows some of the essential components that are needed to implement this research-based strategy. The same for our mathematics. We are actively engaging and building our students' understanding in mathematics. There are high expectations for all students. And we really are, when you look at the verbs that we're using, we are asking them to reason, explain, apply, and connect mathematical knowledge through a variety of rigorous learning tasks. And so in response to the gaps created, we have revamped our curriculum and we have done that based on the continuing the journey, mathematics, learning, 2021 and beyond. And so this is essential. And our teachers at the elementary level are utilizing the investigations curriculum. And we are doing that across our K through two programs. So moving forward, we are going to continue to support the mental health needs of our students. We are going to continue to embrace our English language scholars. And then we are going to continue to accelerate our learning because we are going to get on the other side of this pandemic. It's gonna be in our rearview.
Okay, good evening again. So this is just a pie chart that shows our staffing and where our full-time equivalents or FTEs are programmatically. You can see that 83% are in staff that are directly involved with instruction. Another 8.18% are what are site-based staff, but they're not instructional per se. They're custodians, nutrition, and the administration, which are your principals, assistant principals, and the secretaries or administrative support staff that are in the schools. And then another 9% in round figures, it's actually 8.45%. That is the division support administration. That is our office at Dairy Road, where Dr. Gurley is located, the finance department, the HR department, myself, and operations. And then the division administration annex, which is Pat Cuomo and the tech team that supports the entire division, all of our student devices as well as our staff devices. We have our special education team there and our nutrition management. And then all of our content coordinators, the curriculum instruction coordinators for the entire division. So that's where the people are. And we focus on that in our budget because when you look at our different graphs and charts of our expenses, over 77% of our money is in wages and benefits. And so it's important to know what types of roles are associated with that large expenditure. That's true for any school division in the Commonwealth of the nation. Around 80% of the expenses are always tied to people. We are a people business.
And so all of these things, when we look at what our budget priorities are, you know, our budget priorities are the reconfiguration, ensuring that we don't compromise our student programs, that we continue to enhance our programming for our students, that we remain competitive with our staff wages so that we can attract and retain our staff. And these things are directly aligned to our strategic plan of creating safe and supportive environments, continuing academic excellence, and having an amazing organizational support.
So this chart simply shows how our current budget aligns to our strategic plan and our equity goals. So you can see here that 71% of the budget is directly correlated with academic excellence. Or in the equity plan, the equivalent is diverse, inclusive, and rigorous learning experiences. The next largest category of our budget, when you look at it through the lens of the strategic plan and our equity goals, is the safe and supportive schools part of our strategic plan, the growing relationships part of our equity plan. And that's 15% of the budget. And then right there alongside with that, 14% of the budget is devoted to the organizational supports. That's supported and supported staff. And again, it falls under the heading of organizational supports in our school. I mean, there are a lot of things we do that can fall under multiple categories. But this is actually a best, represents a best practice from the work Renee Hoover's been doing, where when your budget's being reviewed by third parties, they want to see how it's aligned with strategic plan. So she's done some hard work to go through the budget and try to take every line item and say, well, what is this most reflective of? And that's the result of that work. So this is a slide that, if I had to pick one for this budget cycle, this is the one that I think is really very meaningful and it conveys a lot. It's our thermometer that shows the amount of one-time or non-recurring relief funding that we currently have tied to our operating budget. And your operating budget, unlike a capital projects budget, those are recurring expenses. There are salaries and wages for our positions. It's our materials and supplies, our utilities, our maintenance costs. All those things are recurring costs, transportation costs. And going into FY 2022, there was no request for additional local dollars because during the height of that part of the pandemic, everyone was trying to sort out a lot of things, including the city trying to get a handle on what their revenue picture would be like going forward. And so the school board knew that there were a lot of challenges for us as a school division addressing the fallout of the pandemic in this school year. And that was going to require additional resources, but we have relief funds that we could bring to bear in that. And so 4.5, almost 4.6 million of relief funding is in the current FY 22 budget to support operations. So the salary actions that were taken last year, the positions that were added, all of those things were done with federal dollars that will no longer be available to use after September 30th of 2024. And so when you're in a situation like this where you have non-recurring revenues supporting your ongoing operational costs, there's only two ways to cool that off or reduce that fever, if you will. You either have to increase your revenues from recurring sources like your local appropriations, state appropriations, and/or decrease expenses. And I shouldn't say it's one or the other because the reality is you really need to look at both. You need to take, there needs to be action in both areas to balance things out and reduce the dependency on non-recurring funds for operations. So the important thing to understand with the period of performance that we have available, the window that we have available to spend this non-recurring federal relief money is this time next year, we will be developing the budget for fiscal year 2024. Right now, we're developing the budget for next year, fiscal year 2023. We have effectively the budget we're working on right now and one more full budget year to resolve this thermometer issue. So now we go into the budget proposal that we are taking forward at this time. Those of you who've been on the board for a while are used to seeing this format. This is where the finance department is very intentional about highlighting every change that culminates in the recommended bottom line, the recommended ask for cities for local support. So this top part's devoted to salary and benefit actions. These numbers represent a 5% increase for all staff. And then there's also a 10% increase for health insurance. And that is in, we've received a preliminary estimate that is in line with what our healthcare costs are expected to go up. Last year, we had a bit of a holiday on health insurance. There was no increase. What little there was, we just absorbed in the health insurance fund. But with the recovery from the pandemic, people are going back to their normal practices of going to see their doctors and their specialists. And then there's medical inflation, which really never took a vacation. And so all of that is catching up with us in what is a 10% increase in our costs. There's a small increase for the employee assistance program, otherwise known as EAP. And then we are making an adjustment to our nutrition manager scales for elementary, middle, and high school. But that is showing as a zero net cost because we have a budgeted annual transfer to school nutrition because that's a special revenue fund. And our finance director, Renee Hoover, looked at the existing amount that's transferred each year. And we feel that the existing transfer can absorb that scale adjustment. So the next section of our budget changes are the recurring and nondiscretionary contracts. And the first three items in this list are all areas where we pay money to the city for important services. Our people transportation service, that's certainly been a headline item for us for a while now. We all know how critical those services are. And then our contract for maintenance services with the city, that's also reflected here. And that really goes beyond maintenance into some of the sustainability support that we get from them and also facilities development. You all know, we partner with the cities very closely because in fact, half of our facilities are under-titled to the city and half are titled to the school board. It's a real mismatch, but they're all our city's facilities. And then the last part there is something, it's a stormwater tax that there's been discussion in the past about whether or not the school should even be, the school board should even be charged that tax. But it has never been resolved. We continue to get the bills. And over time, it has crept up from being a number in the low 30,000s per year into the 40s. And then this year, Renee Hoover shared with me that it's upwards of like 51,000. This is an amount that's needed to, so that budget line doesn't keep running in a deficit where we're sending that money over for the stormwater tax. Then we have an increase in our contract for K-Tech, $34,804. The prep program, on January 15th, you saw an estimated decrease of $300,000. But as K-Tech and prep, whenever we go through a budget, other boards of these other groups are all going through their budget process in parallel with us. And so sometimes we don't always have all of the information in January when we have that work session. And so working with the prep team, it became apparent that one of the things that happened is last year, they used some fund balance to cover some of their cost increases. And so this year, when the, as the picture became more clear, we have, you know, increases associated with them doing, taking care of health insurance and salary actions for the staff that are under prep. But also those things that were paid for from fund balance, some of those increases now have to be absorbed in the operating budget. So we're continuing to restructure our relation, you know, how we handle providing services for students with intensive needs because the state changed in how they handle reimbursements for what used to be with, for the regional programs like prep. So we're in a little bit of a situation where each year, we estimate what's going to happen and then we look at how it actually shakes out between what we pay prep and the reimbursement we actually get from the state. And so we're still kind of adjusting that line item as we go. But it became clear that the $300,000 was a little bit of an overreach for what we could take that line item down. And the $150,000 seems like a more appropriate savings estimate. Workers' compensation is going up a little bit for this coming year. The Richmond Ballet reduction, that is the program that we, that was, that was done in partnership with the Richmond Ballet for many years. It's called Minds in Motion. It was done at all the elementary schools and it was a really great program. But even before COVID, there started, we started to have some logistics challenges with facilitating that program across all of our elementary schools. And then the program by necessity ended during COVID. So we haven't had it for at least two years, I believe, maybe longer. But during the pandemic, a new partnership was born with the local Charlottesville Ballet, and it is serving all of the fifth graders at Walker. And it's called, I think it's called A Chance to Dance. And I've heard a lot of great things about that. And so it's not that there's no longer a program where the entire grade level gets to participate in a fine arts experience like this. It's just a different program and it's a local, more of a locally based partnership. Software subscription support and maintenance, that $33,060 number is the culmination of a annual scrubbing of all of our softwares across instruction and the administrative support softwares we use. And we look to see what software programs, if any, can be eliminated and how they're, and then what are the actual cost increases that we're seeing with the different annual fees? And that's a net number of a lot of different software packages involved there. And then the technology audit is something we're not discontinuing. It's just that Mr. Cuomo and his team believe that we can shift the resources that we're using for that audit and, you know, achieve the same objectives, but get it some different lenses on our, different views on our technology operations and do so at some cost savings. So we're glad that he brought that forward and we're able to include that in the savings that we're proposing. So that's all for reoccurring and nondiscretionary contracts. I'll turn it back to Dr. Gurley to talk about this next section.
All right, and so very quickly, this section is typically very long. And so now we have just gotten down to $5,650 and changes. We are looking to add some stipends for some individuals who are currently doing the job. And we just want to make sure that we are compensating them in alignment with similar type roles. And so that is for the theater assistant and also for the lead speech pathologist and lead school psychologist. And you see those amounts indicated there. And that would bring a change of, an increase of $5,650. And so throughout this process, we, as Ms. Powell talked about earlier, where most of our positions lie, or where most of our money is, I'm sorry, is in people. And so we do have to find some creative ways to reduce the amount of that thermometer. And so what we are suggesting is, let's see how we can, we have some vacancies currently in our budget. And so can we reduce some positions without causing anyone to lose employment? And I think we've done, we figured out a way to do that to protect people's employment without, protect people's employment. And so what we have here are 17 positions that span across instructional assistants and some administrative positions. And on the next slide, we'll go into that a little deeper. During the pandemic, we had a need for some content squads and that was in response to ensuring that we had the curriculum firmed up in response to ensuring we could bring our students back into our in-person instruction. Also during that time, we did send out books into our communities, into our homes. And so here, that was a one-time cost last school year. We don't have a need to replenish our books, book rooms because we are maintaining the books in our schools. And that was $60,000. And then lastly, the internet and communication, there was some one-time cost associated with the internet and communications for $12,000. And so that is a net of, that is a savings of $980,000.
Thank you, Dr. Gurley. So that is, just take a moment and recognize that it's almost a million dollars in savings that the team and the board have worked to bring forward. And so that's just something to take a moment and recognize. So bringing revenue back into the picture briefly, based on Governor Northrop's budget proposal that was brought forward in December. And that's the only thing we have right now as school finance officials to work with because we don't have a House or Senate proposal. And then the last one is the General Assembly budget proposal. So in the absence of any other guidance, what we have is the budget proposal from December. And that proposal, to the extent that it or something like it holds, would result in $1,786,385 additional state dollars for our school operations for next year. So then if you jump down to the number in bold, what's being put forward as a city request is simply the formula allocation, which is $3,160,549. And I'm actually not sure if that's the most up-to-date number as I look at that. I don't think that's the most current number. I think you saw a different number yesterday. So I apologize for that. But I think the number now is closer to 3.3 million. And so I'm gonna have to talk in some round figures here because I don't have, I'm pretty sure I'm not looking at the most current ones.
Yeah, we have the correct number.
Great. I think we may, and so I may be looking at the wrong presentation here, but that's okay. Because I don't think, the board is not going to take action tonight and the, the correct one's on ESP then we'll be okay. We'll sort it out. Let's continue from here because I don't think, this is the only slide that's really going to have any differences, I think, for the most part. So basically what happened is from the number that was shared with the school board on January 15th up until Tuesday night, when we, I got a phone call that there was a new estimate on the state, I mean, on the local tax revenues. We went from like 3, 3.1 million to about 3.3 million. So that was good. We gained about $200,000 just based on the, the baseline calculation, which is that 40% of new personal property and real estate taxes go to education for Charlottesville. So you take the formula allocation and all, and we're adding to that the increase in the transportation contract, the increase in the maintenance contract, and the amount that we estimate we need to balance our stormwater tax line item. Those are all monies that we receive from the city, but then we send those funds directly back to the city. So if you total those things together, it would be the $4 million shown there. But I've got the, here's the, here are the accurate, more accurate numbers. So the formula allocation increase from the city, based on the numbers we got this week, were, it's $3,337,820. Again, you add to that the contract increases we were given for transportation, maintenance and stormwater tax. And that would take our city, our city request to $4,216,341. If the city grants that request, if that request is what the allocation turns out to be, we would reduce our dependency on the federal relief funds for operations by $2,458,460. So that would be a very significant decrease in that thermometer, which will come up again later. But before we go there, this is actually, ooh, this is probably not the right numbers either. Leslie, we better switch to the other presentation.
They were right.
Thank you. Yeah, I forgot summary slide is also, I mean, we're talking about a 200,000. The differences are due to something good. The revised, the, the latest calculation of what our formula, that does affect the bottom line of all these numbers. So I have to give Leslie a moment to bring that up for the viewers.
Slide 17. Keep going. Keep going. Right there. Yep, that's it.
Hold on, backup Leslie. Still, that slide is still not the right one. I could go to email and send you something. I don't know. Otherwise. Yes, that is the correct one. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, so. I don't think I'm dri, I'm not driving anymore, Leslie. Okay, here we go. So with everything you've seen up to this point, the recommended total budget for, that we would be adopting for fiscal year 2023 would be $106,916,231. The general fund operate, operating part of that budget is $83,267,031. This is a good moment to remind everyone what the difference is between the general operating budget and the special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are what I call money in, money out for a specific purpose. It is our school nutrition program, which the school board does make a supplemental appropriation each year to help fund the quality of our school nutrition program. But all of the monies that are received from the federal government, that program is primarily funded by the federal government, state government, primarily federal, and the, the monies that are collected from students who do pay for their meals. And then their catering revenues as well sometimes. That's one example. Other examples are like Title I, Title 6B, all your major grants. Any grant we receive is in the special revenue fund because it's money that is granted for a specific purpose. It can only be used for that purpose. And those monies are, I mean, they're important funds, but they have to be accounted for separately. So there are also monies that we receive from the state that fall into the special revenue fund because they're restricted use monies. So the changes in the budget from FY21, and that should be FY22 to FY23, are, it would be $3,931,517 increase for the general operating fund and then $8,595,463 increase for the special revenue funds. And you can see a further breakdown at the bottom there of what's behind those proposed changes. The reason that the special revenue fund is changing so much is again, the American Rescue Plan Act. I mean, there's just some huge dollars in special revenue funds now because of ARP. So this, these pie charts just simply show the breakdown of the budget revenue by source and expenditures by category. I won't go around the pie charts for you, but again, you see here that salary and benefits are the majority of the, of the cost, even the contracts services has a significant salaries portion in it because that's where all of our bus driver salaries are. It's where the staff at KTEC, the staff at prep that work with our students. So even contract services has a wages and benefits component within it. And you can see here that on the revenue side, that the city appropriation is, is really key. And back in many, many old presentations, I would always say local appropriation is ultimately what determines what your public education system can or can't do. And that's true for every locality in the Commonwealth. It is the local appropriation that determines ultimately what can and cannot happen in a school division. So back to the thermometer graphic, you can see where we are now on the left. And if this budget proposal holds with something close to what we've seen from the governor's budget proposal in December, with, with the ask that is being recommended for the city, if that is, if that holds, we could take the thermometer down quite a bit to about 2.1 million. And that is good progress for one year. It's really important that this type of progress be made now because otherwise you're looking at a cliff for the following year that could, would be very painful to navigate. So the box on the right simply shows again what our total awards have been from, through the CARES and ARP grant awards that we received last year. You can see what was actually spent from CARES I in the FY21 budget. You can see what is in the adopted budget for this year that was, that's planned to be spent. And then you can see with this proposal, what the recommendation is for the continued use of one-time funding in next year's budget fiscal year 23. And that would leave over 8.7 million in the non-recurring funds to figure out some really good things to do with. One of the really good things would be the 280,000 for the private fiber network. Other really good things would be the, the things that are in the CIP. But those are decisions that, you know, we don't have to make them here. They're a little further out. But those will be important decisions nonetheless. So that really wraps up the slides. This is just a reminder of where we are in this process. The next meeting as Chairman, Chairman Torres referred to is the 15th.
Can't hear Ms. Torres. Her light's on though.
There we go. Hello. Thank you. And so we'll start down at this end. I don't know if our student, if you have any questions about budget, any ideas, any input? That's a lot, isn't it? Okay. Ms. McKeever, do you have questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Gurley, for all your hard work in coming up with this budget. I know it's been, your, your first one is superintendent and I appreciate the way you have prioritized our staff, specifically with the salary actions. I think it's incredibly important. There's very few ways to show our sal, our staff how important they are. And one of the only ways is through these salary actions. So I really do appreciate the average increase of 5%. I, we, you know, given the work that we, I've done in reconfiguration, obviously inflation as a very, very high rate right now. So even the 5%, you know, who knows if that's reflected in any meaningful way to, for our staff. I mean, it's in some way, but I don't, it, it helps us be competitive in other, from other divisions, which I think is crucially important. But I just don't want to lose sight of, especially as we are discussing this with the city around reconfiguration, like 3.7 million dollars of this is salary actions. And it's basically to keep us competitive and to get us the very best and retain the very best teachers in our division and staff, for that matter. And I just cannot emphasize enough how important that is. And if we do not commit to our salary actions for our staff, we will see a very big difference from year to year to year. And, and it will just erode morale and, and the quality of education. But I'm, so I'm very happy to see these budget change recommendations. I just always want to be able to say that we are competitive and value our staff. And I think, and I'm hoping that the city council agrees with us as we are going to make this ask. The, I think it's very important to recognize the fact that our recurring and non-discretionary contracts are, you know, primarily with the city. So, you know, these operational asks that we make year after year after year, you know, maybe in the past we were asked, coming out of a recession for program expansion. I don't see that in this budget. And this is a very modest ask that basically is supporting our staff in the middle of a pandemic and hyperinflation and to the city's staff in our contracts. So I just hope that we can continue to not, you know, is, to continue to have a good relationship with city council. They say, you know, we do the micromanaging of our budget and with the collaboration of our staff. And since we are the experts on this budget. And I just want to say, you know, operationally, you guys have done a phenomenal job. Exactly what we asked for you to do, which is to make a good faith effort and say to the city, look, we know we're asking a lot with this reconfiguration. It supports the whole community to do this reconfiguration project. So we're not going to ask you for millions and millions and millions of dollars of programmatic expansion in the meantime. So thank you for doing that. And I just really want to emphasize that this is what that looks like. It's, you know, paying our staff a little bit more, again, in terms of times of a pandemic and of hyperinflation. And, and, and paying city staff more to maintain their contracts. So thank you again, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Bryce Morseberger. I don't have any comments at this time. Okay. Mr. Bryce?
Again, thank you, Dr. Gurley, Kim and your staff for, I think this is one of the most refreshing budgets I've seen in a while. Giving our teachers and our support staff 5% raise for everybody. I think that acknowledges the fact that we do value our teachers. Retaining our teachers is important as well as bringing them in. But the most important part is once we get them here, to keep them. This says a lot about our, our school board that we do value our workers and our teachers and staff members. So thank you all for your hard work on this budget. Thank you.
Mr. Morse, Dr. Kraft?
Yes, this has really been an excellent process and presentation, multiple presentations. And I just want to echo some of the sentiments of gratitude about that. I think this is my sixth, sixth budget since I've been on the board. I, I feel like, you know, one of the things I really appreciate is sort of really understanding what's behind the decisions that are being made and why they're being made, whether it's, you know, additional, you know, money or whether we're saving money. And, you know, and also the planning that's gone into this for reduction in the, the one-time funding. So I think the budget is, is, it's very respectful. It's very respectful toward our, our teachers, our staff. It's, it values them. I think it's also respectful toward, you know, the, the, the city of Charlottesville, who does give us, you know, quite a bit of money and, and making a really good faith effort to reduce those one-time, the use of those one-time funds. And I think it's been very carefully and thoughtfully put together. So I'm very supportive of, of this budget.
Thank you, Ms. Dooly. Great. Thank you, everybody. Again, I want to kind of echo some of the things that I think I said last night as far as the presentation that we made during our joint work session with council. I think we did, you know, what we said we would do. We brought forth, you know, in good faith, a really thoughtful budget, you know, as, as far as our, our relationship with council and, and considering that we come to them with that and, and showing, you know, reflecting what our values are and reflecting and respecting the fact that we have a relationship with them. I hope, and, and again, I did mention to them last night that they acknowledge and they see what we brought forward. I struggle personally. I think this is my fifth budget that they are having their budget work session right now. And every single year, it, it happens at the same time that we have our meeting. And so I hope that, and I've already reached out to one council member, that I would love to see that done a little bit differently. I think there is a desperate need, especially now, to almost, you know, have another opportunity to sit with them because we are sitting here in our meeting, wondering what's being said and presented and what thoughts are, and sure, we can go and I will go and listen to the recording of that meeting. But I hope, you know, that they can take a look at what our needs are to continue to provide the education that we do here in Charlottesville and, and not be at this point in time, looking to make cuts or changing things that we have had established and, and in place for years and years and years, like our, our funding formula or those types of things and, and trying to make cuts, you know, that, that we won't be aware of. So I would like to, you know, see, and I don't know if we can, you know, or you all have an opportunity to sit down and, and meet with city staff and, and a couple of counselors, you know, so that we're not just sitting here waiting in limbo. But I think, I think we can do better. And I think, you know, there have been counselors who have expressed a desire to sit down and meet again and to have this conversation. And I think it's important because we all are working together to provide, you know, wonderful and excellent services for the community and, and for our students. And, and they heard, you know, from many of the board members, you know, and, and Dr. Gurley and staff, how we do value our students and the needs of our students. And we continue to prioritize our students and I hope that they can continue to support us in that. So thank you, Ms. Powell and, and your team and Dr. Gurley for this. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you. So that concludes our presentations. And now we have board response to written reports. So we did have board members, the, the So we did have board members, the transportation and attendance update, update that was provided to us. And then also school board member committee reports was included in that. So that is available for the public to take a look at as well, if they'd like to. So we'll move on beyond that unless anybody has any questions about that. All right. And if not, we are now at our next opportunity for comments from members of the community. Again, as a reminder, we limit comments to three minutes per person. Please state your name and address. And we will start with any attendees here in the media center who would like to approach the the mic. Hello?
Good evening. My name is Becca Saxon. I am a resident of the city of Charlottesville, parent of a student at Charlottesville High School. And concerned about the the political climate that has been created in recent weeks with inauguration of our new governor. And wanted to bring to your attention because I am positive that all of you share the same concerns I do about the chilling effect that that could have on our curriculum and many of our equity initiatives. Earlier today, the coalition of statewide groups all signed off on a statement that said that this executive order one should be repealed, that it was unnecessarily divisive, that having these emails that are sent to secretive addresses, you know, to this address and then are now apparently he's claiming are not able to be FOIA'd is, you know, not what we need for public education. It is not what we need for our students. It is not what we need for parents and teachers to be able to trust each other. And I am confident that this school board agrees with that. However, missing from the coalition was the support of the Virginia School Boards Association. And so like I said at your last meeting, it is clear to me that that organization is currently not reflecting the values of this community, the values that I know all of you ran on. And that you are looking to implement in your time as school board members. And so once again, I would encourage you to question what they send you, ask questions. I am here as a representative of the, of the Education Association. Jessica Taylor, who I'm pretty sure is going to speak from the Zoom room in a couple of minutes, is also available. We, we aren't going to tell you that nothing they give you is of value because some of it is they, there are many things that we do. I think we, this community would align with the SBA's goals, but please question that and please let us know if we can be of support in that. Just, it is, it is clear that there is some political stuff going on that I don't think is what you all ultimately support. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that I see anybody else in the media center. But now, Mr. Como, if we can look in the, in the Zoom room.
Yes, I, the name is Jessica Taylor. Jessica, you should be able to go unmute at this time and you'll have three minutes.
There we go. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Gurley. Before I present you with an update on our efforts to gain a majority of support for collective bargaining, the Charlottesville Education Association wants to extend thanks to this board and Dr. Gurley for enforcing the mask mandate and maintaining the mitigation strategies put forth last year. This action by you honors the spirit of reopening in which those decisions were made and represents your continued commitment to the health and safety of your employees, students and community. This is how we envision collective bargaining working. Since the last school board meeting, we have presented information on collective bargaining to staff members at every school in the division. CEA members have solicited feedback on educator support for exercising our rights to bargain and have received responses from approximately 50% of eligible staff. Of those who have responded so far, 80% have expressed unequivocal support and another 19% expressed support with some questions. There was only one respondent who expressed disinterest in bargaining for our contract. One. At every school building, CEA members have committed to follow up with every staff member who has not responded to the survey. Once that is complete and we have the majority needed. Uh, sorry, once that is complete and if we have the majority needed, we will have the support needed to exercise our collective bargaining rights. We will collect official signatures and come to you with a request for a collective bargaining ordinance. Our goal is to bring this before you at the April board meeting. At the last meeting, Becca and I offered to present information about bargaining to the board. Please look for invitations from the CEA to meet with representatives from the VEA as well as members of our local to share information about bargaining as well as answer questions you may have about the process and how bargaining could look in Charlottesville. As the climate in Richmond becomes more and more divisive, it is imperative that your employees continue to feel the support this board has espoused, especially since the onset of the pandemic. The CEA asks that as our conversations become more frequent and concrete, that we transition our language from if we get bargaining in Charlottesville to when we get bargaining in Charlottesville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Como?
There are no other hands raised at this time and no other chats indicating that speaking time.
Okay. Give it just a few more seconds. All right. Thank you. I'm going to close that. We will now move on to comments from the board. And before we start with that, I do want to provide a collective gratitude from all of us to everybody for all of your presentations. And, and what you have brought to us tonight. So we will start now with Ms. McKeever.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just take this one minute to acknowledge how challenging this adjustment to a new governor can be. Certainly, I don't recall in my time in Virginia since the mid eighties anymore kind of weird hostile transition. And I think that our board needs to be basically a brick wall over the coming years. And having said that, a brick wall is kind of passive. But I think, you know, in order to protect our students, which I just feel so urgently important, that we have been doing such a good job of that, trying to protect our students and make sure that our students feel safe in our schools. That me, you know, against hate speech and, you know, against weapons. I mean, there's just a lot of things we try, we've been trying to do over the past decade to make sure that our kids are safe and feel safe in school so that actual instruction can be the main priority. So we're going to need to continue to be the brick wall with our policies, especially supporting, you know, children who are trans LGBTQ plus and also different racial groups. I think we just need to make, just be very hyper focused on protecting all of our students. So one of the things I wanted to mention to Ms. Saxon, I, I didn't, you know, the SBA, I have been, I think, you know, we can all agree that we're routinely disappointed in some of the people that we, you know, kind of, you know, work with. I've, you know, I've been vocal in my opposition to many things that the SBA has done. And I don't even know if anybody asked the SBA. So like to have them being dragged makes me like, I don't want to be defending them because I am frequently a vocal opponent of them. So I do think there is room for dialogue with the SBA. And on so many issues, they can be really solid. I do think that there are board members around the state that are complicit in undermining the, how positive public education is in our state. And to that end, I think we as a board need to be telling the truth about the value of public education, not only in our community, in our state, and how we do the good work as a school division to support our students and families. And, you know, some of the dialogue that I see or some of the community, the perception issues around public education. You know, I, they're just wrong. They're just wrong. And we just need to make sure that we're telling the truth and that we're telling our story well. And I think, you know, even though a brick wall is very passive, I want to be very proactive in this telling of our good story. What public education provides and what it can do. And we have an exceptional leader. We have an exceptionally committed board and community and we just really are able to tell that story. And I want us to do that in not a hostile or directed way, but just because that's what we do and and be the, the model that we, I know that we are around the state for what public education can mean to a community. So thank you, Becca, Ms. Saxon, and a gentleman who was here before. And Ms. Taylor and Ms. Settle for all of their comments earlier too. I'm really excited about the Charlottesville United for Public Education Group. And I don't want to, I'm going to limit my time here, but that I definitely want to say thank you to them. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever, Ms. Bryce Morseberger.
I just wanted to echo some of Ms. McKeever's comments to say that I am happy that we as a board have been holding the line on our COVID mitigation strategies and masking because the layers of mitigation do work. And foremost, we want to keep our students and faculty and staff in our community safe. And it's also disturbing in the last month to see what feels like, or what is public education being under assault in the state of Virginia. The current leadership, the current governor, it's disturbing to see how he is attempting to censor speech and the accurate teaching of history. And also creating a culture of fear and intimidation with these tip lines and things like that. And just to the community that supports us and our students and our, I just want to say to our community that even though we disagree about how to get there, sometimes we all want, want what's best for our students. And so we all come at it at different angles and we can agree, but I feel like, or disagree. But I feel like at the end of the day, we all come together for students. And I hope that we can continue to do that and we can spend a, hopefully, it might not happen, we can spend more time in the upcoming year focusing on our kids and helping them instead of being on the defensive with what is coming at us from the state leadership. But we'll continue to hold the line, but hopefully, since we're all in accord about how to keep us safe, we can get back to focusing on students. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Well, I'm going to extend an invitation. Hoping to see each one of the board members as the current president of the Central Region. And Ms. Jacqueline Newton is the vice president from Buckingham. Looking forward to seeing you all at our central regional meeting on March 2. We have an exciting guest speaker, Dr. Paul Harris, who was formerly at the University of Virginia and now University of Pennsylvania, will be our keynote speaker for that meeting. So I'm excited and looking forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up and taking that role. Mr. Morse?
I, I think this board has shown that we are committed to making reconfiguration happen. There are a variety of ways that we instruct and we impact our students. And I just applaud us as a board, but also the community members that are supporting us as we try to get this done with the city of Charlottesville and city council to make this happen. We know that we are impacting students through instruction and our reading program and our math program. That is pieces of the puzzle and investing in our school buildings is another piece. So we are asking for that collaboration to make sure that we serve our children.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft.
Yes. Well, I want to congratulate Mr. Bryant, first of all, on becoming the president. He has ascended to the presidency of the VSB A Central Region. So whether you wanted to or not, but congratulations on that. And I want to say that this is a very crucial time for us, both with our budget process and with the reconfiguration process. And I just, you know, we've been working very hard. A lot of people have been working very, very hard on this. But now is the time to really pay attention. And I'm saying this to the public who are listening and watching. This is the time to pay attention as some important decisions will need to be made in the next couple of months. So we need advocacy. We need support. I do also appreciate the community support that's coming forward and organizing under Charlottesville United. I think that's wonderful. And we're going to need everybody's support as we work with city council to make sure that our, our project can go forward in the way that it needs to go forward. It's very important. One other piece of this is the, at the state level with the legislation in the General Assembly regarding our ability to levy a, a sales tax that could fund this project. So now is the time to advocate at that level as well. So, you know, any connections that you have, relationships that you have, just please do it, do it soon. I'm very appreciative of our representative Senator Creeddeats and also Delegate Sally Hudson for their support of us in this endeavor. But, you know, again, in the political climate that we're in, things are less certain now than they were a few months ago. So we have to work extra hard to make sure these things happen. And finally, I would like, I'm looking forward to learning more about the collective bargaining process. And really appreciate that opportunity. I think it's exciting. So anyway, I do look forward to that. And I guess that it, that is it for me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
I just wanted to draw attention to some of my comments in the written report, specifically the Public Education Foundation and mostly directed towards staff. And Paula might be bringing this back to you as well. They have a lot of money and they want to give it away. And so they are looking for input from Charlottesville, Admiral's Wall, but Charlottesville about needs and projects that they can fund. They said they're ready to cut checks. So please, please bring them our way.
Thank you. And our student down there at the end, do you have any comments or thoughts as we wrap things up this evening?
No.
Thank you. Want to say thank you for attending. We appreciate you. Thank you, everybody. Again, appreciate all of you. I'm not going to repeat too, too much, but please, yes, community members, please stay engaged, stay healthy. Do all the things that we need to do. We don't want to be part of that graphic that Dr. Baptist presented. I don't remember what you call that. Diminished vigilance, yes. So please, let's not be part of that. And yeah, all for vigilance on all fronts here. So thank you to everybody. And I'll now turn it over to Dr. Gurley for your comments.
All right. I just want to say thank you to Kim Powell and Renee, Ms. Hoover. I just want to thank you all for just assisting me with this budget development. I just want to thank you all for just assisting me with this budget development process and and our principals and teachers because, you know, this is a very thoughtful process. This isn't always numbers. It's people. You know, I think people, we look at this and we see dollars, but this is really about children. And so I never want us to lose sight of that. And, you know, I just want to end with two things that we've been talking a lot about gaps the last two days. And and really what I want people to know is that there are a lot of amazing things happening here. Our teachers are not sitting on their hands. When you go in the buildings, they are on the floor with children. They are actively engaged, you know, ducking COVID. I mean, they are just doing all types of things to ensure that our students are being successful in schools. And and because of that, I just want to say that I I really cannot wait until we on the other side of this so that people will say, wow, what did you do? Because, I mean, these gaps are going to be eliminated. And I know that I'm in the schools looking at the data and the data that is people, it's children. And so we get it and we understand the work that's happening. And it's a lot of the hard, heavy lifting from the academic services team with Dr. Odie and her team. So I am just, you know, I just, it is one of those things that kept me up because we just kept talking about gaps and we are responding and we are filling those gaps and they won't be gaps anymore. And so I just want to thank our teachers and our principals because those are the people on the front lines every single day doing this heavy lifting. And we're going to get on the other side of this.
Thank you. So our work session wrap up, nothing. We're kind of good for now. All right. And now upcoming meetings. We do, as I mentioned earlier, we have a meeting Tuesday, February 15 at 5:00 PM, which is a school board budget work session. And and then we'll bring back that action item, I believe, for Mr. Como at that point in time. And then Thursday, February 24 at 5:00 is a special school board meeting where we meet and receive your final draft and hopefully approval of that of that budget. So we look forward to seeing everybody and having your input as always. We appreciate all the emails and public comment. And that's it. And I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.